Good morning. Welcome to Exploring Economic Development with MEDC. I am Meredith Harris, your host, and this is episode 52. Today, we are going to welcome our special guest, President Mike Ossing from the City Council. But before we do that, just want to recap really quick our last episode, which was episode 51 with Michelle Mercier from the Marlboro Regional Chamber of Commerce. If you missed Michelle's episode, it was really great. We got to learn a lot about what's going on at the Chamber, why businesses should want to be involved in the Chamber, and how they get involved in the community. So if you missed it, make sure to check it out. If you're watching us live today, we appreciate you tuning in. We're on WMCT TV, we're on YouTube, Facebook, LinkedIn. You can catch us on Spotify. And please make sure to leave comments below. If we can't get back to you right away, we will follow up with you. So ask us your questions. Let us know what you think about the content that we're providing. We want to hear from you. So without further ado, it's my pleasure to introduce our guest today, President Mike Ossing.
Good morning, Meredith.
Good morning, President Ossing. How are you?
I'm having a fantastic day. Any day you can start playing hockey in the morning is a
is a good day. And you get to be on a podcast. That's right. Now, this is not your first time on our podcast.
I know. No, you've been kind enough to have me several times.
Several times. You are our most frequent guest on EED. So thank you for joining us once again. We're so excited to have you. Today, we're going to talk, last time you were on, we talked a lot about kind of taxes and how that works. We talked TIFs before. We've talked municipal aggregation. Today, we want to talk to you a little bit about process and how all the different processes work. I know that doesn't sound like a lot of fun, but it really is going to be a lot of fun, I promise. But before we do that, can you kind of tell for anybody who didn't watch any of your last three episodes, or maybe it was four, I think it was three, but tell them a little bit about yourself, how you got involved in the council, and kind of your background?
Sure. So background, went through the Marlboro Public School System, got my Bachelor of Science degree in nuclear engineering, went to work at Seabrook Station as an engineer, worked my way up to engineering management, spent 35 years at Seabrook Station Nuclear Power Plant, loved it, great job. And then during that time, I was getting an interest in local government, and actually ran for state rep, was unsuccessful, but I got the bug. You got the bug. I got the bug. So ran for City Council in 1997, was not successful then. I think people got tired of seeing me. So 1999, I was successful, topped the ticket as a council at large, and I've been on ever since.
That's incredible. So you call it a bug, it's a sickness, whatever you want to call it, right?
I look at it as a hobby right now, because I've been very interested in municipal finance.
So you're very good at it.
Well, thank you. Some say yes, but we've done a nice job guiding the city in my tenure, along with had great administration and other councils to work with, and we put Marlboro in a very solid financial position.
And so do the quick math, how many years have you been on the council?
I am finishing my 26th year on the council.
That's incredible. And so you were president, you've been the president council, council president for how many years?
This is my sixth year as council president.
And then you were the head of finance for a number of years before that?
13 years as finance chair.
So you've been around the block for a little while?
I've seen quite a bit in the city, a lot of good.
Yeah, yeah, there's been a lot of stuff going on. Right. All right. So before we talk about some of those cool things that have happened, can we talk a little bit for anybody that might be new either to the podcast, or just new to learning about municipal government? What are the functions of the City Council?
Sure. So the City Council has basically three to four functions. There's really four, right? We're the appropriation authority. So the mayor will submit what he wants to spend on. The City Council has the ability to approve those expenditures. So we have the appropriation authority for the city. We are the, we make the laws.
Make the laws.
So whether that be-
Do you follow the laws as well?
We try to follow the laws too. But so we'll make the laws, they're called ordinances in the city, and they range from anything from dump stickers to zoning changes to food establishments. All, you can, you can get lost in reading the orders, but there's, they're there.
There's a lot of them.
The third one, mayoral appointments. So the mayor appoints boards and commissions, as well as department heads. Just last Monday, we approved the new building commissioner, Bill Payton.
Congratulations, Bill.
Good job, Bill. But again, the mayor appoints, the City Council approves. And then we do that for all the board members. So the mayor's always looking for board members. If you want to be on zoning, planning, conservation, there's a whole list, you know, let the mayor know, because that's, there's plenty of opportunities there.
And that's a great way for people to kind of test the waters, get involved, right? You don't have to run for an office right away. You can kind of get involved in that way as well.
That is correct. And it's really a nice starting position, if you have interest in local government.
Right.
The final one is the Special Permit Granting Authority. I think people associate a lot of the council activities with the Special Permit Granting Authority when, you know,
that's what they hear about the most, right?
About the most, that's right.
Yeah. All right. So I want to talk about special permits a little bit more. But before we do that, we're talking about functions. You've kind of given us the four. What, there's committees, right? So often, people see WMCT, our friends down there are covering these committee hearings all the time, committee meetings. Can you tell us a little bit about what they are, how they function? How often do they meet? Kind of what's the deal with the committees?
Sure. So it may surprise you, but the City Council has rules. And as part of our rules, we outline the number of committees that we have. So we currently have 12 committees.
12 committees?
12. So wow.
Fine. That's more than the number of counselors.
That's more than, so all councils get to chair a committee. They, we got the multiple, they're on multiple committees. We try to do it by what they want, what their forte is, or what they're interested in. So there's finance, urban affairs, personnel, public service, open space, operations and oversight, health and human services, legislative and legal, rules, climate resiliency, and public safety. I think I got them all. Wow. I didn't.
That was pretty impressive. Wow.
But as you know, the ones that have the majority of the work are finance.
Yeah, that's what we see.
Urban affairs, public service, personnel, all the appointments usually will go to Personnel Committee, and Legislative and Legal. The other committees are there based on if things come up in the city, we'll send them there. So Legal and Legislative has been doing a good job getting the outdoor dining things approved. So whether it was Lawshoe, Flying Dreams, or the Chappa Restaurant down here on Main Street, that's worked out real well. The Public Service Committee, they spend a lot of their time with telephone poles, with new telephone poles, the wireless facilities, when they want to put a new wireless.
Yeah, they always have to come in.
So we get that a lot, because people, hey, my cell service here doesn't work, you know? So that, so they do a lot of work there.
You said outdoor dining. So I know you guys spent a lot of time with Melinda and LaShu. What a wonderful success that has been. You know, I was, I pulled in last Sunday for the Food Truck Festival, and you know, went to park my car, and you see people are doing yoga on Sunday mornings, and then Friday nights, you hear all the, you know, parents are talking about meeting with other friends, and the kids are having fun, and there's music, and that was a really a cool one.
And I'll give credit to Mayor Vigance Administration and MEDC for getting the Masswork Grants to redo Main Street and redo the City Hall Plaza, right? So you had to have that vision. What do you want to back a City Hall Plaza? Because, I mean, the City Hall, the back was fine. It was a nice plantings, but you couldn't really use it. Right. Now, with the way it's set up with a pavilion type style, with Lawshoe, the Chinese restaurant, the farmer's market on the weekends, and then anybody can use it, you know, call the mayor's office, they'll, they'll set you up. And it's worked out extremely well.
Yeah, it's, it's, there's people, it's bustling, things are happening. And I know the town, the downtown improvement project, when we got the money, I mean, it was tough for a good year, year and a half down here. There was a lot of construction, but it really has worked out for the best.
And that's the hard part, whether it's Route 20, or any development that we're doing, whether it's 57 Main Street, on Main Street, 28 South Bolton, any of the projects, and you can even go to the Apex of the, during construction, it's always inconvenient. But you have to have the vision of what do I want the future to look like?
Right. And the patience.
And the patience. I really give a lot of credit to the business owners that stuck with it, the residents that tolerated the inconveniences.
Still came down.
But still came down, still, still visited the various shops. And it just, it will get there, it's just hard. Yeah. During the construction time, but yeah, in the end, I think the projects have been worth it, and they've done really well.
Yeah. So that, so outdoor dining would go through legislative and legal. What kind of projects come through? Like, obviously, finance, you guys are looking at budgets, you're looking at all kinds of stuff. But what about like urban? What kind of projects do they see in front of urban affairs?
Urban gets a lot of these special permits. So they'll get, if you know, someone wants to build a multifamily house, or multifamily complex, a mixed-use development.
Okay.
Any land type issues that, any of the zoning type changes, like zoning is a real big one, because zoning really gets folks excited. Sure. Because you're always fighting there, I don't want to change. But I tell folks, not changing is okay, but we've got to be adaptive to bring in new revenue, right? Because the whole purpose of MEDC and this segment is to, you know, we want to spur economic development, right, to help maintain and stabilize our tax base, so that it's stable and predictable. And I'd say the last 10 to 12 years, we've kept the tax rate, or the tax increase for that average house, less than $200. It's incredible. It's been extremely successful. But you have to have the balance. And I understand people, I don't want to build, you know, I want this all to stay the same. And I say, that's okay, buy the land. The people that own the land have, well, they, they have a right to develop.
To do something with it.
Our houses are there because we got to build it, you know? And so you're constantly challenged by how much is too much, and at what pace, you know? So my, my vision, slow, steady, stream of new development that comes in.
Pipeline. We always talk about the pipeline.
That will bring in revenue, because the costs, whether it's salaries, pensions, health insurance, all continue to go up. And if you don't have any means to offset that revenue, that means the taxpayers pick up the bigger share of it.
Well, that's, so then the projects that are being either approved in urban affairs, those are helping the stuff that you guys see in finance, right? So that's where all the money requests are coming through, right?
That's correct. So the finance will get the mayor's budgets, the bonds, we're talking fire stations now, we're talking a new school, all those will go to. The Finance Committee, when it comes to the money part, Urban Affairs did a nice job last night, walking through the process of the New Richer School, what's to come, and they outlined what some of the potential costs are. But until that, that's next year's vote. That'll be in finance for a bond to build a new school. And, you know, right now, they're looking at $170 million for a new school.
Right. It's a big price tag.
We went from Goodnow in 2000 at $56 million, and now-
170.
170 million. That's a five-year difference. Now, the schools-
But construction costs-
Right. Construction costs have gone up. The school's bigger. Goodnow's was a 700-student school that's got 800 in it right now. And this one's a school for 950 students.
Yeah. It's needed.
It's needed. It's going to help pull off some of the strain, the cane and jaric, and rich, Goodnow. And again, you talk economic development, you want to have a solid school system, with good buildings. And so you want to attract people to come to live in Marlboro. If we're going to build multifamily housing, you want them to come, enjoy the housing, have a good school, and great amenities in the city to play with, so.
I mean, we talk about that all the time, like, the projects that you're seeing come in, and all these different things, the companies that are helping pay for some of these things, the developments that are helping pay for it, you, you're creating like an ecosystem, right? So the companies that are coming in, we ask them all the time, what's going to make you stay here? And as long as they have all the things that their employees need to be successful, and they want to stay here, that's really like part of the meat of what they talk to us about. And so exactly what you're saying is all of that, places to live, things to do after they get out of work, you know, all those things really kind of come together. And then even the recreational stuff too, like the Boardwalk a couple of years ago, last year, I guess two years ago now, but those things are really important to people too, when they're making location decisions.
When we go out and talk to the larger companies, and not so larger companies, what do you need to retain your staff? What are they looking for? And they want things to do.
Things to do.
Close by. Right. They don't want to have to drive somewhere else to get there. And Marlboro's done a real nice job with those amenities, whether it's via Apex, the fields that we have, the ice hockey rink, there are things to do. The bike trail's been a huge success.
Right.
You can now get on that bike trail, and you can go, you can go all over now.
And you do.
And I do. But, but it's great. And it's, I just met a new, we had the grand opening for the Lincoln Mechanic Street, the Alta facility. Unbelievable. If you, if the residents haven't seen it, go take a tour. It's beautiful. You go in that court, yeah, you don't know that you're in Marlboro. They just did a really nice job. And I had a new, a new resident that was only a week, week into his lease, came from Southborough. And he says, I gotta tell you, I'm here because that rail trail's here, and the amenities that Marlboro has, that we don't have in Southborough, which I thought was, I mean, granted, one person, but it's nice to hear.
Absolutely. We're doing something right.
We're doing something right, which is, which is good.
So Alta, you mentioned Alta. That project was an incredible city, public-private partnership. I mean, that was really an incredible example of how municipality can come together with a private owner to make a really great project at the end of the day. To your point, if anyone hasn't seen it, they should go check it out. But it started with kind of this idea where the council entrusted MEDC to go and purchase the land with the idea of we're going to turn it around and sell it to a developer that has the right vision for the city. We didn't want to just, we were getting requests for gas stations and another convenience store. And so we really didn't want to see that happen. We really knew that the, the revenue that could come from that site was so much more than just a gas station or a convenience store. And so then the next steps, once we purchased the land, the next step was the zoning. So we're going to talk a little bit about special permits and overlays. But I think the zoning, that neighborhood business district was the catalyst of what helped us attract that project.
That's correct. So we were in the process of selling and buying the land, but no one, you know, the developer like that would want a mixed-use multifamily facility that wasn't allowed there. It's not attractive.
Yeah, we couldn't get them.
You know, Council on Irish and I, with MEDC and the Massachusetts Area Planning Council, you got it, MAPC, all did a nice job coming up with a zoning for basically French Hills, starting at Lincoln Mechanic, and going right up to Broad Street, to enhance the zoning to allow different types of uses. And it's now made, you now got the Armory.
Yep. That's under construction.
That's under construction right now. You've got the corner of Cashman in Lincoln, 12 units going in as well, with Alta. And so you're going to see that kind of-
Coffee Loft just did an expansion, yeah.
Coffee Loft, shout out to Linda and the MEDC team for the small business grants to let them expand. I mean, that's, that's what, that's what we're looking for. And it's, again, that's, I go back to the dollar, right? I need the economic revenue coming in. So if the Coffee Loft expands, they bring in more customers, it improves, improves the revenue for the city. Alta, you're bringing 276, you know, tenants. There's going to be retail that the MEDC is working with to attract retail into those, into the first floor. Again, economic development, bringing money into the city. Why? So that we can now offset taxes, because everything else goes up, and I need that new revenue.
To pay for the schools.
To pay for a school, to pay for a fire station. And the more we can continue to promote that, the more successful Marlboro is, that's correct.
Well, and you know, that one was an actual zoning change. It wasn't an overlay. And sometimes we take some heat that the, you know, we change the zoning often, or we do different things. But there is, it's proactive. And to your point, we looked at that site and that whole area to say, okay, how do we set this area up for success? So that we're, when we're out there trying to look for the developer to come in and develop the Lincoln Mechanic, it was the Lincoln Mechanic premises at the time. And when we're trying to attract someone, it needs to be attractive, you know? Not everybody's going to choose to develop, you know, they got choices they have to make, different communities that they're looking in, but how do we make them want to invest here? And we set them up for success by doing that.
Right. So there's a difference between an overlay and a district, right? So the neighborhood business district, which is what we did from Lincoln Mechanic up to Broad Street, we did a similar one for Donald Lynch Boulevard, to redo, to kind of enhance the opportunities down at Donald Lynch Boulevard. Council Delano did a nice one for the Wayside Village District, Downtown Village District, you know, that's, now you're seeing two, hopefully three establishments coming to the downtown area, which would be fantastic. Right. And you can see it, it happened, right? Pico moved in. Here we took a restaurant from Boston, very successful. And now we had, and they, they took the chance to come to downtown Marlboro. And they're doing that, because they're looking at, where's my bait, where's my tenants or my customers coming from, right? And they can see a 36-unit facility being built on South Bolton, a 92-unit facility at 57 Main, 276 at Lincoln, and Mechanic, 12 at Cashman and Alta, 17 at the Armory. Right. So you've got all these-
Built-in customers.
Built-in customers that are going to be looking for a place to eat. And so we're getting, I mean, Tyrrific, Wellies, Wemmy's has been knocking it out of the park. I mean, it just, it's just phenomenal. I was joking the other, we're coming back from, from the Cape, and there on the billboard on 495 is Wemmy's on the billboard.
They got a good marketing team.
They're doing okay, I guess. So good for them.
All right. So we've kind of danced around it a little bit. So tell me, you talked the difference between a district and an overlay. What, what is an overlay zoning? We're, I want to talk about special permits too, but kind of give us the lay-in line, from a zoning perspective. What is an overlay?
So an overlay is when the applicant wants to take several of their parcels, or a parcel, and allow a special use in the zoning. In other words, they want to take a, I'll use Lazard Drive, for example. It's a limited industrial area that they want to now put housing on, but the zoning, that overlay specifies, it can only, the neat part about overlay is you get to tie the developer's hands to certain things. How many units, all the setbacks that you want, any other uses on that site. And the thing about an overlay is the underlying uses of the overlay. Now, if it was a residential area, we're putting the overlay in, or limited industrial, all those stay the same.
Yeah. So the underlying district, right?
Stay, stays untouched. But that overlay allows a unique set of-
Uses.
Guidelines, guardrails, maybe, to be built at that location. And most of them usually say, come with a special permit. Yep, you can do all this.
But you're going to come back to us.
You're going to come back to the council. The council's going to make sure we're getting what we envisioned the overlay to be.
So you, so when you do an overlay, you're not just saying, okay, you can do all your housing by right, you can do all these things, go for it?
No.
No, not at all.
Because again, all the underlying zoning or uses still apply. And I try to tell people, they say, well, what, what can I do? And I say, well, we have a table of use document. And now their eyes start glassing over it. But it lists all the things you can do. And if it's not listed in the table of uses, you can't do it. An easy example, casinos. Casinos aren't listed on a table of uses, you can't put a casino in the city of Marlboro. Now, can I change that? Right. Yes, you can.
Well, I was going to say, an example of that, I remember, I think it was President Clancy that did it, but when LaShu, everybody's favorite coffee roaster, you know, when they came in, we did not have coffee roasting, or coffee roastery in the table of uses. So I think it was President Clancy that put it in.
Same thing, same thing with Brew Pubs. All right. So we didn't, we didn't have those. So you had to, you have to change the zoning to allow that use. And so-
Now, can anyone change the zoning? How does that work?
So you can request, typically, it has to be the landowner that wants the zoning change, or the city-
City Council.
Those powers invested in the City Council. Again, I go back to, we make the rules. So the council can, can make, make the change, and say, okay, we would like to have Brew Pubs in various locations. Another one, like marijuana facilities. Where would we put marijuana facilities, right? So you change the zoning to say, okay, we're going to put marijuana facilities on the east side of town, the west side of town, they got to be on Route 20, they got to be in an industrial district. And you set all the parameters for what makes up the marijuana facility.
But then, so it's not, and it's not, one counselor comes up with an idea, everybody has to get on board, you have to get it approved.
A lot of them, a lot of councils will come up with the idea, which is good. I mean, that's all encouraged. But like anything else, you've got to get eight of them to, through the process, to agree with the zoning change. Okay. And that, as we've seen, can be a challenge at times, depending on the merits of the particular zoning change.
Right. And now, and some people know this, not everybody does, but so whenever a zoning change comes up, whether it was the Apex, the mixed-use overlay, Wayside, Donald Lynch, we've talked about a couple, neighborhood business, you mentioned MAPC. I don't think people sometimes understand, like, MEDC has a specific budget line item that goes towards planning services, right? So when something like this comes up, we're not just throwing things at the wall. We actually bring in experts that are planners and trained in this, these types of things to help us kind of put that together.
That's correct. And we use that skill set to enhance Marlboro's zoning. And they, they've got experience throughout the Commonwealth and probably other places. And they use that, and they come back, hey, look, you want to have interior roadways, or you want to have sidewalks here, but you can actually shrink things down, or you can expand them, you want this much green space. And they provide all that insight to the council, and the council will then, if it looks appropriate, factor it into the zoning change.
Right. That was a huge one for Apex, where I remember people were really concerned that there was going to be increased traffic on Route 20, and this is going to be terrible. And we were able to kind of, because of MAPC and working together, bring all the traffic inside of the plaza, which was really brilliant.
Which was, which is great, because it did take everybody off Route 20, and kept them into the, into the Apex facility. And Council Delano even incorporated that into the Wayside zoning district on the Route 20.
Interconnected parcels, I think was the word term.
That have to have that connection as they move forward. So, so they do, they do well.
All right. So we've talked about a few of them. So that's overlays. Can you walk us through the process of a special permit? What's the difference between an overlay versus a special permit?
Sure. So an overlay allows you the use to do a particular activity. So if you, like, an overlay, I get the overlay, I'll use Lazard Drive to put in up to 130 condominiums, right?
By special permit.
By special permit. All right. So they get the overlay, you got to get the overlay first, then you come to the City Council to get the special permit. And the special permit, which they have before us now, is, you know, here's how we want it to look, what we want it to be. And that's where the council gets their swing at it for, you know, how big, landscape size, rooms, how many two bedrooms, you know, all the details that the council then gets to decide before rendering a decision as to whether or not the special permit takes place. And you probably want to know, oh, it's the special permit process. So the applicant would come before the City Council, say, I would like a special permit. So that gets submitted, it has all the plans of what the building's going to look like, what they want to do. The City Council then sets a date for a public hearing. And then we send that to the Urban Affairs Committee, one of those 12 committees that we talked about earlier. The public hearings where the public gets the opportunity to discuss the project. So again, it gets public hearing, we advertise, so all the butters that are around-
They get notified.
They get notified that it's coming. And then they get an opportunity at the public hearing to speak for or against a particular project. So we have the public hearing, four stages, in favor, people speaking against, questions, and then questions from the City Councilors. Once the public hearing is complete, the 90-day clock starts. So the council has 90 days to act on the special permit. It can be extended, but if the council doesn't act on the special permit, it gets approved by default.
Approved by default.
That is correct. So it is very important for the council to-
Keep moving.
Keep moving, and making sure that the 90 days-
Don't come up. Yeah, you don't bump up against it.
Doesn't become an issue. And the developers are good about it, because they don't, you know, if we're getting close, they're usually willing to extend, because they know if they don't want to extend, the council probably won't approve their project.
They just vote no.
So, so they'll do that. So, you know, if the special permit gets approved, then there's a 20-day appeal period. So you now, so now, people that may not have liked the fact that the council took an action, whether to approve or deny, it could get denied. We've done those before. And just recently, as a matter of fact, so-
Last week.
That's last week. So now the public or the applicant gets a chance to appeal the decision, right? And then once they appeal the decision, things kind of stop. Because now you got to work it through the legal system, as to whether, you know, the appeal has any merit. Okay. And that can take, you know, I'll use the example of McGee Farm, the 100, was 180 apartments down on McGee Farm on Route 20 East, the special permit was not approved, it got appealed by the applicant, we went back to court.
Which took months.
Took about eighteen months to work its way through, ended up, the courts will want you to mediate, they'll want the applicant and the city to get in a room together and say, okay. Let's let's be big, big children about this and see if we can work something out. And if not, I mean, if the applicant thinks they've got an ironclad case, or the city thinks they do. They'll just pursue it through court and let the court render a decision. Uh, one way or the other, saying, you know, thumbs up or thumbs down.
Right, now, and I see often, you know, you see people kind of commenting, and I think one, I, this is why I want to talk about this today, because I think it's important for people to understand. You see the zone, the zoning will get approved, and then the special permit comes forward, and a lot of times people will confuse the zoning for a project. You know, so they think that we're approving double the amount of units that we are, you know, on different sites. So I I see that a lot, and I thought it was important to kind of distinguish between the two, because people think there's a lot more being approved than there is right now.
It is, and and tha- that's a challenge for the councils, right? When the zoning comes, it's the vision of what we think this is gonna look like. So here's the shiny picture, we think we're gonna put ninety units up, and it's gonna look like this. But w- we try to remember as a city council, we're voting on the zoning change, because just because. This particular person before us with that, someone else can say, I want to use it, and I want to go build this there. And it may not be the nice shiny toy that was, you saw in the picture, so. For the rule of unintended consequences, you want to make sure the zoning that you approve. Is gonna yield the results that you want.
Alright, so we've kind of, we've talked about a whole bunch of different examples, but can you, can you think of maybe one or two top examples of, on your time on the council? Overlays that were approved and or special permits, whether it's both or one or the other, that really benefited the city, that were really, you know, a great. Shining example of an overlay or a special permit in practice. There's a lot of them.
There's a lot of them. So, uh, so from a residential side, I'll say the Green District. Down on Cimarrano, so that's uh, four hundred and seventy five units with a potential for four hundred and seventy five more. That's bringing in over a million dollars worth of revenue.
So say that again, because I think that's important people to know.
Million dollars worth of revenue to the city, plus we got two point eight million dollars in mitigation for the fire station that's sitting there. Uh, ready to go, and that doesn't count the ancillary stuff. Motor excise tax, all the building permits and fees that we had to collect, the water and sewer that gets paid. Uh, so so, so it's 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 a big moneymaker. Apex, everybody knows where Apex is, but Apex is is huge for um, tax revenue, not just on the taxes that they pay. But the food, the entertainment.
That's another one that's a, close to a million dollars a year, I believe they take in.
We've done extremely well.
Because you've got the office component to there, you've got restaurants inside the hotels, I mean, there's so much going on.
That's great, car washes, you know, all the. Smaller, the bakeries and other things that are down there, banks.
Protein sho- shakes and all these different things, right.
Chick-fil-A, I mean.
We just learned recently that that area right there brings in the most visitors to the city, kind of between all of the different things that are going on at Arcade Plaza and. At Apex, it is a huge generator.
It is a huge generator.
For the city.
We we are very fortunate from the revenue side of the house of what that brings in.
Well, and I think sometimes too, people don't realize, like the meal, the spe- the meals tax, or in just all, and the taxes that come along with it, forget the local option, but. When people are coming in for, you know, it's a sports event at the, at the sports center, or whatever, they're, they don't live here, they don't typically come here. So they're coming here to spend their discretionary income and and buy things, and that all comes back to benefit the city of Marlboro.
That's, and so in that, tho- those meal tax funds are what's getting us uh, turf fields and upgraded playgrounds throughout the city. And and so this worked out real well, we we know that when. The hockey rink has tournaments, the amount of hotel rooms that, that that, you you can't find them. Which is great. But now that they stay at the hotel, so we're getting hotel revenue, which funds economic development.
Not MEDC specifically, but economics.
I'll use the Lincoln Mechanic Street, we're able to use funds to 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 purchase that, or the meal stacks. They're gonna eat. So it's benefiting all our restaurants. Gas stations, barbers, and maybe not for me. Again, it's all that, it's the smaller fish feed.
I mean, we say it all the time, and we and we hear from the restaurants, when they know when there's a big hockey tournament in town, because all of a sudden, they've got, you know, reservations. And they've got big parties that are coming in, and, you know, and then you hope that if they're down at Kennedy's having a bite to eat, maybe when they're making their way back to the hotel, they stop downtown. And go to the bookstore, or whatever, whatever else they do. So, okay, so we said Green District, Apex, we've done some other ones recently, any others that you want to point to?
Lazart's going through the process right now. We've got uh, Results Way, so that's where Quest and Avalon.
That was one of the first ones.
That was, I think that was one of the first ones I was familiar with. For an overlay going in, and that that's worked out tremendously.
Amazing, amazing.
For the uh, for the city.
I honestly think that's like an example for the Commonwealth, because it, people weren't doing it as that, as often back then, but that was an example of. Really, the state coming together, the city, the private, you know, investor, and you then got this, it was the old HP site. And Joe Zink and his team came in, and they had this vision of um, live, work, play, mixed use, and I think at the time, people really weren't familiar with that. Where Joe's saying, okay, we're gonna put, you know, commercial, you know, office use or lab, it was what it turned out to be. Plus a hotel, plus residential, and I think at the time, it was some retail, which didn't end up working out, but kind of all these mix of uses that. At the time, people didn't, you didn't do that, you didn't put your office parks next to a residential building.
We didn't, but if if you go back to the twenty ten master plan for MEDC.
Great point.
One of the things that they highlighted was that the west side of the city. The limited industrial area, that the municipality Marlboro should focus on, a combination of. Housing and business development type in the same area, which at that time was kind of foreign, no, no one was excited about that. I'm not touching that, and now, we've, we we encourage it, right? To the point where that initial Results Way overlay district where Avalon and Quest are, we hop the street.
Right, we put it over the campus.
Campuses, right, so. So so again, the vision going forward is there would be more buildings, or more office, commercial, and housing at some point. On that side of the street. Now, so we know the commercial's coming, right? Nice, huge, two hundred thousand square foot Massachusetts State Crime Lab. In the development, right? So that's perfect, right? So so, so so it's starting. They've been able to keep the BJ's came over, right? BJ's.
And that's all new growth, and the parking garage, BJ's didn't build a new building, but the parking garage, we were able to collect the new revenue on that, the crime lab, we will do the same. You know, that's kind of where it all comes together, and, um, but you see, the housing that they're building close to these office parks, there's, there's a strategy to that. Because the companies, again, if their employees don't have anywhere to live, they're not gonna be able to attract the employees to want to work at the companies, and so that's why they're trying to kind of. Cater to that workforce, you know, uh, part of the population to get them to come out here.
Works out good, I mean, and again, I go back to the steady predictable. Tax adjustments we were able to make are only because we've been able to focus on getting economic development, whether it's residential. Uh, commercial, uh, at a pace that will will continue to feed. The budget, because the budget keeps going up. And I remind the councils, I remind the council all the time, all the projects that you approve today. You're talking two to three, four years down the road before you actually see the financial.
Impact.
Impact on the community, right? But you, you've got to have a, in my mind, a constant. System to allow that to happen, or accept the fact that you're, we we know, it's a challenge to cut budgets. And you, no one likes to raise taxes, so.
Remember our friends in Hopkinson a few years ago?
I mean, I I don't know.
Her house, right?
Yeah, I don't know. For the, for their average house. And and we, and and I I will tell people, we've been able to keep it under two hundred, it's gonna be a challenge this year. But we offer more services. There's no bus fees, there's no athletic fees, we pick up trash. It's all.
You're getting a lot.
All built into that, and that's because we have a very sound commercial base here in the city, and. You can argue location. Told you this on prior podcasts, the probably least sexiest vote I've ever made was to get the upgrades to the Eastley and Westley Treatment Plant. Because if I can handle my sewer. I can then go develop the city. That's correct, because if you can't, you then 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 you stop building. And you can watch, watch surrounding municipalities, they just don't have the capacity to do that, and they're struggling. And uh, we are so fortunate here in Marlboro.
Well, we've, and it's been strategic, right? So we work at it. Alright, so we've talked about some of the good examples, so is there any that you can think of in your time on the council that you, you know, at the time, you guys made a decision as a council? But then looking back, you're saying, oh, man, I wish we had another bite at that apple, it didn't turn out the way we thought it would, or any of those that come to mind?
So so the, there's two that that bother me, I guess, that that I don't like. Uh, one is the airport. I I think we missed the air, the opportunity on the airport to zone that to allow, there was a hundred um, senior. Housing, over fifty five housing. Complex that would have brought in a tremendous amount of revenue. Uh, there was opposition. From uh, the 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 neighbors, uh, so it didn't pass.
So it didn't pass, I remember that.
But now we have a limited industrial park. That has a couple of landscaping firms, uh, hopefully a pickleball court's supposed to go on the back there, but there's not, there's no movement on that. But the revenue side for the city is not, not there, I mean, not even close. So 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 that was disappointing, um, but again, that that's, you don't get your eight votes. The projects don't move forward. And so you have, it's called the super majority, you gotta get eight of the eleven councillors. To approve a project, or the zoning, otherwise it doesn't happen, which is okay, which which is good, you know. You know, pardon me, say, I'd rather just have six, you know, so I can move stuff along, but you you need that to make sure we're all, you know. To do the right thing. So those are part of the checks and balances in it to. Stop projects, and and again, it's hindsight, do you like them or not? Uh, the second one I would mention is over on William Street, uh, again, the over fifty five. Development down there. The, had an opportunity to put another twenty eight. In a, um, over fifty five units in a more like a apartment style complex. Council didn't want that, and so now we have a limited industrial, and I'm not saying limited industrial is bad, I'm looking at it from. Would I have had more revenue from a different type of project that uh, is a little. Eye pleasing. And more folks in the community, but hey, they're there, they're paying taxes, I'm happy. Yeah, I just think those were missed opportunities.
Sure, could have been a more impact that could have been, yeah.
That's correct.
Right, alright, so we're bumping up against time, believe it or not, we're having so much fun here, chatting about all these awesome city council functions. Um, but I want to talk to you a little bit, since since you retired from Seabrook, you've had a little bit more time to get involved in some different groups and activities. And you've taken on a pretty big role at the MMA, which, for anybody that's watching, it's the Mass Municipal Association. Can you tell us what you're doing? I think it's amazing how much you're doing with them, especially for, as a resident, to say, you you are involved, they know that we're here, they know what's going on. You you really are doing a lot, so can you tell us a little bit about what you're doing at the MMA and how it, how it benefits the residents of Marlboro?
So the Massachusetts Municipal Association, MMA, is a, is a group that represents all three hundred and fifty one cities and towns. Alright, so they're kind of the voice, they're the, you know, they they put together policies and go right across, they're right across the street from the State House. So they're constantly chirping in the ears of the legislature and the governor on various activities. Uh, I've been fortunate enough for the last seven years now, I'm on the. MMA's, what they call the Energy and Environment Policy Committee. I've been chairing it for the last four, uh, we take a look at all the state regular bills that are before the legislature. To, that have to deal with energy or the environment. Example, municipal aggregation. Water uh, quality. Siting for new uh, battery storage facilities, you pick, I mean, there's hundreds of bills that. And they, and and as you watch the legislature, uh, they don't pass a whole lot, alright? We try to advocate for those and 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 put a look as a, as a group of municipalities, this is what we'd like to do.
What's important to us.
So so I chair that committee, and then they, they have other committees, they have a fiscal committee, they have a transportation committee. A policy committee, I think Council Roby's on the policy committee. Yep, no, so so. Gets represented in in those uh, activities. I'm also the, they have a councils association, so I'm the District Two rep for the council association. So that's all the city councillors, so the six, a little over six hundred city councillors throughout the Commonwealth, for the fifty two cities. Commonwealth, um, so I represent um, District Two, which is Fitchburg, Gardner. Framingham, Marlboro, Southbridge, Worcester, and I think I got them all, I think that's all of them.
Well, it just, and again, the more you know, right? So Marlboro's at the forefront of their minds, but all the stuff that's going on, and you're able to bring it back and share with the councillors here, and. I just think that's really awesome, it's really good for the city.
And then they have me on the MMA Board of Directors, I'm on that, which is good, and then the Local Government Advisory Committee, which is a monthly meeting with the Lieutenant Governor that we get to say. So we get FaceTime. On a monthly uh, basis to, you know, advocate for various items, so it it it's a. I don't call it work, because to me, I'm retired, it's a hobby. I do it, they want me to do it, I I asked to be on none of these, they asked me, and I said, alright, if you're asking me to play, I'm gonna play, but you're you're gonna get me. So uh, I don't mind doing that, I mean, so it's fun, and uh, I enjoy it, and hopefully, you know, it benefits the MMA. Bring stuff back to Marlboro.
Yeah, well, you're bringing close to thirty years of experience in municipal government to the table, so that's pretty great. Alright, so there's, we're in election season. Election season, silly season, all of the above, but we know that we're gonna see at least two new faces on the council next year. Potentially more, but we know, we know there's at least two new ones. So you've been the president of the council for some time. Do you have any advice that you give new councillors that come on? You've been doing this for for a while, and what would you say to the new folks that are coming in? Or maybe even to somebody that is considering getting involved, or joining a committee, or a board, or whatever it is, any any advice you have for people that are looking to get involved?
So so the MMA has me do new city councillor training every two years that I give to the new city council. And and I do the same thing for our city. I say, okay, you need to know the rules, and I go through what those are. Finance, you got, you gotta pick what you like, y- y- if you want to try to do everything, God bless you. I happen to like finance, and I stayed in that lane. Now, in the president role, I gotta. Expand that to urban affairs and all the other ones, but pick something you like, alright?
Become an expert.
And then learn it, ask questions, because I I have a training session that I give for the new councillors on finance. Some. Get it, and some, okay, thank you very much, and. And and I don't expect that, I tell them, if you all thought like me, I would be the only happy person on the planet, right? So so you need other people and other opinions to make it work. And, but find something you're passionate about. And spend time and learn it, because if you know the rules, then you know how to get things done. Really is, and knowing where, knowing, having money doesn't hurt either, the city's very fortunate that we we can do all these things.
We've got triple A bond rating. Alright, so before we let you go, is there anything coming up in the city, you guys, you have a lot going on all the time? But is there anything you want to share with people that are watching that they might not know about, or what should we be paying attention to right now?
So a- a- on a, on a good financial point of view, the, our municipal aggregation, so cities on municipal aggregation is. How you pay the supply side portion of your electric bill is gonna go down. We just signed a new three year contract. We've been saving, this the contract that we currently have with the First Point Power ends in November. Uh, by that time, we'll have saved the residents participating in the program close to three million dollars. So this new rate, we're paying, currently paying fourteen point one cents. Per kilowatt hour, it's gonna drop to thirteen point seven.
That's great.
So it it really, I mean, so I, again, I look at it from economic development, so now, at the Harris household, they have more money to spend to do. They they have more money to. To do at your discretion, right? So we'll continue, um, we can't always guarantee the savings. But right now, with the current national grid rate, if you wanted to stay on the national grid, you'd be. And you use six hundred kilowatts of electricity, and this is where everybody's eyes glass over. You would say. You'd be saving on our program, ten dollars a month on your electric bill.
And that adds up.
And that adds up.
Hundred and twenty dollars a year.
That's correct, and we saw when those swings of the. Energy market, people were saving hundreds of dollars by being in the city's municipal aggregation program. We've done real well, I hope it continues to go well, because it's a lot, again, it's a lot of its market driven, but at least, at least through early twenty twenty six. Against a three year contract.
We're good.
National Grid goes out every six months, so I can't predict what their rates are gonna be, we forecasted them out, and it looks like we'll be really good. And continue to save money, but I can only predict what is actually out there right now, and I know through Feb, through, yeah, into February, you'll save ten bucks. If you use six hundred, if you use more than that, you're gonna save even more money.
Now, is councillor Navin is involved in that with you as well?
Navin's the wing guy, he he does a good job, so he's. Navin's the wing guy. He, he does a good job, so he's, he's, he's done. And so, so this is all, the mailers will go out on October first.
Okay.
The people in the program are gonna see it and hear about it. Um, so I'm expecting this won't be.
Can't wait.
Yeah.
That's the day that this, we'll be premiering this episode, so check your mailbox, folks.
So the, so I'm encouraged by that, so that the residents, again, I look for opportunities of how can. We as a city help residents save money.
Money.
Whether, whether it's through taxes, electricity bills, you pick it. And uh, I think uh, I think this one will do well.
And uh.